Council meeting, and it is July 16th. And so we didn't have one over the Fourth of July period of time. So we only have one meeting this month. So at that, I would like to start with the land acknowledgement. Well, and the city of Arcata acknowledges the lands we are located on are unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known as the Wiat language as gudini, meaning over in the woods or among the redwoods. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous people from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. And this acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. So, thank you. I would like to ask you to please rise and for the flag salute, if you wish. Thank you. May we have roll call, please?
Mayor Stillman.
Present.
Vice Mayor White.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salasar.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews is absent, but we do have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Under ceremony matters, we have none, and we have no reports from commissions or committees tonight. And under staff reports, we will receive a report from the city manager, Tabitha Miller, regarding a possible transit occupancy tax, TOT, revenue sharing program. Thank you.
I just needed one second.
I'm sure I rushed everyone along, but thank you. If you'd like, we could do another staff report beforehand. And maybe, Merrick, you would like to talk about the pipeline that we're installing while we get the program up and running?
Sure. Just, I would like to make an announcement that the city has started its water, its steel, its steel water line replacement project. So notices did go out to the mail. In those notices, it talks about where work will be happening throughout the city. And I just want to make it clear that this, we will be working in many locations across the city, but there will be, property owners and residents will receive a notice 72 hours prior to start of work. There may be some parking restrictions in neighborhoods where there are going to be water line replacement projects. And the first phase of the work will begin along Antony, Antoin Court, Antoinet Court, and Martha Court in August. And those will be the first location. And also beginning in along Wyatt Lane, Stromberg Avenue, Roberts Way, and Stewart Avenue.
Thank you. I feel like that's important because what, people will wonder, and if they didn't catch it in their emails that were sent out, you know, not everybody has signed up for emails alerts. And so there may be some people in our community being unaware. So I appreciate that. So we'll go back to item number A. We'll receive a report from our assistant city manager, Tabitha Miller, on TOT. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. So we want to take, take this opportunity to introduce the possibility of doing a transient occupancy tax revenue sharing program and sort of introduce the idea to you. This is a staff report, so really what we're looking for is just some general idea of whether or not this is something you would be interested in. And just to let everybody know, the transient occupancy tax is also known as the hotel tax. So it's the tax that is collected on accommodations in city limits. I wanted to start by just giving a big picture real quickly on California tourism and sort of the impact on not only our local budget at the city, but also just the industry that it stands for within our state. This is some information from the Visit California site. Dean Ruinan Associates provided it to them. But in 2024, it's $157.3 billion industry for our state. That was a 3% increase from 2023. It generates $12.6 billion in state and local tax revenue. That's split about half and half, about half of that state and half is local, city, and county. And it's almost $1.2 million in this last year. The chart on the right-hand side is also from the Visit California website and information. And I thought it was interesting because it shows you a select group of industries. As you'll see, the total, the all industry total is not the total of those presented there. But it shows the gross domestic product in millions of dollars. And then the TOPI is the taxes on production and import. So that's the taxes it generates. And if you look at the far right-hand side, you can see that travel, as far as the taxes it generates, is only second as a percentage of the GDP to retail trade. And it certainly brings in quite a bit more money in, in just dollars than much bigger industries like information, construction, and healthcare and social assistance. So it, it not only is an important, even though it's not as big, it is an important driver for local and state sale, sales, or not sales, but taxes in general. Makes up about 2.3% of the total GDP for the state of California, just to put it in perspective. This graph gives you a, an idea of sort of how people are, who are traveling in California spend their money. And one of the things that I found interesting is that you can see the bottom line there is accommodations, accommodations. And this isn't billions of dollars. It's about 25% of the money that they spend locally. So it's certainly a big chunk, but you can see that it really, tourism dollars drive our food service, local transportation and gas, retail sales, arts, entertainment, and recreation. You know, we bring in 75 cents more than what the accommodations cost. And I think it kind of puts it in perspective. This happens to be those same categories for Humboldt County, which is the, you know, the smallest grouping I could find in our area. And this, of course, is in millions, not billions of dollars. But it's still a significant amount of money. It's about 440,000 or 440 million dollars. And again, the percentages look similar, except for the fact that local transportation and gas is a much higher percentage of the total. And visitor to air, not surprisingly, is a smaller number. And what I found interesting is that food stores was much bigger on our local level than the state level. And again, that probably has something to do with the fact that we're a rural community here in Humboldt County. So kind of shifting gears and doing an overview of TOT revenue sharing or hotel incentive programs. Most of those that I looked at and sort of the pop, the purpose of them is a financial incentive to encourage development in new hotels. Sometimes it's to direct development to specific locations, you know, downtown areas, historic areas, maybe where the conference centers are, but where cities and counties determine that they need accommodations. It also can be used to increase or standardize the quality of hotels. Many of them have requirements that they have a certain star or diamond rating in order to qualify for the incentive program. And then also promoting reinvestment in existing hotels. The other point that usually comes up is that there is an identifiable funding gap that has to be identified as part of the sharing agreement or the program. Basically, that what that means is without the TOT sharing revenue, the project isn't financially viable. And usually, there's a third party, an independent third party that verifies that as part of the application process. And typically, what happens is that it's a share of the incremental revenues received from the project over a number of years is what the investor or the developer of the hotel receives. And I'll walk through an example of what incremental revenues are in a little while. But it's basically the, the piece here that's really sort of key is that it's the additional money that would be generated by a new hotel or and/or a renovation to a hotel. So it's additional income to the city is the idea behind that and not from existing or cannibalizing your current revenue source. I'm going to do four examples of actual programs, and they kind of give a good standard idea of what different entities or jurisdictions are doing. Palm Springs is really important because depending on which site I got, some say originally launched in 2008. It looks like that was when their, their ordinance was actually put in place. Other references talk about 2010, but it's been around for a long time and certainly gets a lot of crudos for the success in revitalizing its city hotel stock and attracting the investment and really kind of creating the city's reputation as a premier tourist destination. They are currently on like their Phase Two renovation project, which was in place starting, I think, in 2019 and goes through 2028. Their current program requires that the hotel invest not less than $5,000 per room. They, six or more rooms, you can receive 50% of the TOT incremental increase for up to 10 years. And if you invest, again, this is specifically hitting a type of hotel, Class One historic hotel sites, they bump that up to 75% of the tax. So it gets a little bit higher contribution to the project. Dublin, California, quite a bit different, but they're really focused on high quality. There, it has to be either a four-star or diamond hotel, and there are, you know, plenty of descriptions of what that means, or three-star. And obviously, if you are a four-star, you get a little bit better amount, you get up to 70%. And for up to 20 years, if it is a three-star, it's a 50% rebate. And for no more than, than 15 years. They also have something that they're obviously looking at maxing out the number of rooms because it's got to be hotels that are 125 or more rooms. And then redevelopment is a smaller benefit, but it's 50% and no longer than 10 years will they receive that rebate amount. Most of the, the limitations will also tie it back to that fees, that feasibility amount or the amount that was necessary to bridge the financial gap in the program. Temecula is another one that has a focus on luxury hotels. They really are only interested in pretty much four-star hotels, and they're very specific even about the services that will be required to qualify. They require 50 rooms or more. They want concierge, bell service, parking, banquet, meeting rooms. And they are limited to 50%, but they also limit that it can't be more than 1.75% of the total construction cost. And they're more, they have more specific individual agreements that they're tying to, to, to meet their goals. Hemet was interesting because it was probably the most generous of all of the programs that I could find. And even their press release, the city, they did this in 2024, I believe, really focused on the length and the amount of tax rebate that they are giving, which, you know, really says a lot about what they're trying to do as far as and how important those hotels are to their, their economy and their development. So they've got a 25-year share with up to 90% for the first 10 years, and then it drops. They do have a minimum of $15,000 per guest room expenditures as far as furniture fixtures and equipment, and then $20,000 per guest room for property improvement. So this is outside of the hotel rooms. It's going to be restaurants, grounds, amenities, that sort of thing. And then they give an even higher incentive for building in their historic downtown village district, and that they, they will go up to 30 years with 90% for the first 15 years, and then 75% of that incremental amount for the following five years. And then for the last nine years, it's at 50%. So that's a pretty extensive, and it was certainly the most generous of, of what I could find out there. They also had a nice clause that I thought was interesting was just requiring good faith efforts to hire locally and, and commit to local businesses. So just to make sure that everybody understood what incremental tax increase and, and how we would calculate what a rebate or a sharing program would give back to a potential hotel developer or redeveloper. I'm going to take an example where we have a hotel that had generated an average over the last three years of $50,000 a year. So year one was 45,000, year two was 55,000, year three was 50,000. And again, it's dividing by three. They, they created $50,000 for this particular city, and that becomes the base or the incremental amount that we're going to base everything off. So in year five, they've renovated and they're now collecting TOT of $75,000. What we're looking at is that incremental increase. It's the $75,000 minus the base of 50 or the $25,000 increase. And so that's the amount that would be subject to a revenue share. As an example, here, we have a rebate of 70%. So the hotel would get paid back $17,500, and the city would retain $7,500 from that incremental increase, plus they would continue to get the initial or base amount of 50,000. So the city is still up, you know, $7,500 from the original amount or 15%. So it, it is good for both parties. The city's better off at the end, and so is the hotel. I wanted to kind of just give you a really quick overview of where the city's TOT revenue is currently. And as you can see, you know, we, the, the graph has kind of bounced around. Obviously, COVID had some impacts there, but the best year that the city had was 21, 22, coming out of the COVID with a little over $2 million in revenue. Part of the reason that we saw the decrease down in 2022 and 2023, and that drop down to 1.5 million dollars was taking offline the two hotels for the project Home Key. That, that certainly hit the revenues. And we're estimating about 1.6 million dollars in the current or the last fiscal year that ended as of June 30th. So that's kind of where we're at today. And the idea would be to try to build on that and also increase the spending and the dollars that are being made in the, the industry in our community. Just a few other considerations that I throw out there that if you're, if you are interested in something like this, most programs, as I said, do require evidence of the funding gap so that it's not a gifting of public funds. They also, this, these monies may be subject to prevailing wage, so that may have an impact on the cost to the developer. Many have a sunset provision, and part of the argument for that is that it creates that sense of urgency, encouraging development today rather than waiting. And they do typically have separate agreements that call for deadlines and are unique to each developer. And then obviously, if you require quality standards like the three or four stars, they require that they must be met in order to continue to receive the funds. And I just, the, the Fair Winds happened to be a hotel that has come in and talked to the city about opportunities for possible partnerships as far as funding. Nothing has been completed, but I thought they would be a really good example to kind of show what is possible, and they agreed that I could show their picture. So I want to make sure you know that. This is the current picture. This is actually off Google Earth. I think it might actually look a little better today, but obviously, it is, quite frankly, an eyesore. And this happens to be a picture of their proposal or their, their design proposal. So this is certainly something that if, if we were able to put this program in place, might be able to generate these types of transitions. And this would be a 27, it's proposed as a 27-room hotel. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. So does, I have some thoughts, but I'll let everyone else speak first. How do you want to go?
I have a question.
Okay, Kimberly?
I was just wondering if you could speak to redevelopment versus a new hotel and how we might differentiate between the two?
So I think it really depends on your goals, like which one, if you have a priority for new hotels versus renovations, you could certainly set your, your revenue share based on that, what you want to encourage, you know, obviously favoring one or the other. And some of it is just driven by the dollars, how much more revenue is going to be generated. Typically, a brand-new hotel is going to add stock, and so it's going to generate more, you know, there, there isn't a base. It's going to generate more income opposed, as opposed to a hotel, that you're, you're potentially increasing the room rate, but you're still receiving money today. So some of that is going to be, you know, figuring out what the council priorities are and then looking at the, the funding that would come from it and basing your, your choices on how you structure it that way.
I'm super excited about this because we're losing money because people are staying in Airbnbs or going to Eureka. And so this would be one way to keep the money here. And, you know, people will be eating here, spending money here, not just TOT. So overall, it's a big boon to all of Arcata.
Yeah.
Of course, the majority of hotels that we currently have are in Valley West, and that's another topic on its own, and whether it's going to pencil out for these folks because of, you know, other issues that are going along. But definitely for the Jack and, and maybe just getting more hotels closer to Cal Poly Humboldt in, in downtown.
I, I do want to make one, just quick correction there, that your, most of your, your vacation, short-term vacation rentals are permitted, and they do remit the TOT.
That's true.
So we do get the, we do get the funding from them, so I want to make sure that we give them.
I was going to correct that, too.
Yeah, no, thank you for that.
I wanted to make sure that people understand that.
But we do have a lot of people going to other, outside of.
We do, and, and that is something that even, even consultants, that the city, you know, and, and people who, who come to visit us, a lot of times, we find that they're not staying in Arcata, they're staying elsewhere, and it's sort of like, why?
I could tell you one reason, but because of price for the Eureka Inn, and there are people staying there often. So I'll come over here.
Would we have, if we set policies in place, would we have some level of discretion? Or is it just a policy and that would apply to whomever or wherever?
Yes, you can have, you can build in discretion. And most of them are applied for what I saw, most, most other jurisdictions are doing is that it's a, a pretty complex application process. And it follows from, you know, the time that they're getting their building permit through the whole process. And some of the entities actually made it so that city council would have to approve each and every one, or they might have a, a dollar threshold. So you can have as much, you know, involvement in them as you want. And I think the important thing is we want to be careful about making sure that your criteria, you, you're, there's not something where you're discriminating against a hotel or not, but you can certainly pick by your goals and how you set up the program to, you know, to, to put the emphasis where you believe the rooms or what type of rooms or where they should be, should be located. So you have, you have a lot of discretion in setting it up so it meets your goals.
Okay. Well, I can't tell you the number of conversations I've had with folks since I've been serving for the past four and a half years of wanting more hotels in the downtown area. And I just had a question, I just had a conversation this weekend, or yesterday, about it. So I think that I'm very much in favor of exploring this.
Yeah, I don't really have any questions, just, yeah, same as Stacy, that we hear about this a lot, and it would be interesting to look at some of these options, both for new construction, you know, especially more in the downtown area, and, you know, improvement of existing as well. But yeah, thank you.
So one of the things I'm thinking about is that we have something to measure it against. So we're thinking about the Mills Act and, and how in that you have to state, state when you're going to be doing work, et cetera. And I think that's really important for us to have guidelines or have them have guidelines so that we can know exactly when things are going to be happening, so it doesn't spread for a long time and we don't have, we don't have the results that we want. I think that's really important to have that. We've had that experience in the past where we've been able to give money for something, and it's still not finished. So I think being really specific about how we want to handle it is important.
One of, one of the things that I think in all of the agreements they have is the hotel has to be completed within a certain period of time after the building permit is pulled. And because it's incremental, if they're not, they're not, of course. So if they're not generating additional revenue, then there wouldn't be any revenue sharing to have. So they, they really have to be an, an active partner.
Thank you. Is there more comments, concerns?
Yeah, of course. I just wish that somehow we could come up with some kind of model to improve the Valley West area. And I do know that in order for that incremental monies to be spent, they're going to have to invest. And then that's a big leap of faith of whether or not they're going to be able to make that money back and wondering if there's some way that we could get creative with that. And then also, can you explain if it's a new development, that, that incremental, how would you measure that? Would it be like?
So most likely what it would be is actually just looking at the revenue that is being brought in by that new hotel. The one factor that we would need to consider and build into our model would be making sure that we're not, and we would, we would set up the program with a time limit or, or a number of, of room limit so that we're not, we're not cannibalizing, we're not encouraging, you know, growth to the point where we're cannibalizing our current hotels or taking away from. So the idea would be that a new hotel would be bringing in additional and new income, and so that would be how it would be set.
Right.
But making sure that we, we don't.
Take care of those that have been here.
Yeah, and making sure that we don't overbuild. Not that, again, we're, we're talking about projects, making them pencil out funding-wise. They're not getting, they're not going to get a huge windfall from this. This is really making it, you know, viable for them to actually invest, whether it's renovations or in new hotels. It's trying to make up that difference that may not pencil out for a developer.
And like the Jack Hotel, this may or may make a difference in whether they can move forward with any kind of funding challenges they may have, we could fill that gap.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of the idea.
Yeah. Since they aren't operating at all, and they haven't for, that building hasn't been operating for over three years now.
Yeah, and in, in that case, we'd look at, you know, whatever revenue was, the, the revenue that was generated in TOT back when it was operating as a hotel, which obviously might have to be adjusted, but I can't imagine that there wouldn't be an increase.
Or they have to look at some, a new way of doing their work. So what would you like from us? We've received your report. Do you would like any kind of a?
So because this is not, it's just a staff report, I generally just want the idea that this is something you're interested in. It also, we want to make sure we also build it into, and it's, and it's, you know, it meets the goals of our economic strategic plan, which we will be starting. I think that's coming before you at our next meeting for contracts. So it's just something that we wanted to make you aware of, get general support, and, you know, start making sure that that's something that we take a look at. So that's, that's what I'm looking for is just nods of heads and, and, you know, any, and any specific direction as far as the program would be developed over, you know, the time that it takes.
You don't want specific?
You're welcome to share, but I don't, I don't need, but I'm not looking at bringing anything.
So we should just generally nod our heads if we're going to do that with it?
Yes, that'd be lovely.
Okay, thank you very much.
No, I'm super excited about this and looking forward to seeing what comes to fruition.
Well, it's a great idea, and it will take time to develop it. And I think it's a, a good direction for us to go, and it'll be perfect for us with our economic strategic plan, too. It's another element of it. So with that, I want to thank you very much for that. And I'm going to go on to other staff reports. And do we have any other staff reports this evening?
We don't have any other staff reports.
Okay, thank you very much. Under written and oral communications, early time limit, the city council values your comments, and the public comment period allows people to address the council on matters not on the agenda. This early section of the public comment is limited to 15 minutes, and speakers are limited to two minutes each. If you prefer to have a full three minutes of your time for your public comment, the item is continued at the end of the meeting. Under item number 12, where speakers are granted three minutes. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot take, can take discussion, cannot discussion or take action on any items listed on the agenda, not listed on the agenda. The council may respond to statements, and there will also be a time to provide public comments specific to each item on the agenda this evening. Thank you. So is there anyone interested in oral communications this evening? Please come up to the di, podium. And if you wouldn't mind all coming up, because we'll keep track of you in the. because we'll keep track of you, and if you're closer to speaking each minute, your 15 minutes might last longer, so thank you.
My name is Abraham from Arcata. Today, I'd like to tell you about how modern Zionism got started with the Dreyfus Affair. You see, Theodore Herzl, the father of Zionism, originally believed that Jews should assimilate, but chance of death to the Jews by angry French mobs during the Dreyfus Affair convinced him that antisemitism was, to his surprise, still alive and well in the West, as it is today. And the goal of Zionism hasn't changed since Herzl. He was interested in the right of Jews to govern and defend themselves. It's a fairly uncontroversial notion, until you come to the question of whether the Jews, many of whom had lived in Israel since before the birth of Christ, should declare independence from Great Britain, the last in a long line of occupiers of their indigenous homeland. Fast forward to 2025. Now, the Jews in Israel have won independence from Great Britain, but somehow we're still asking the same question. Do Jews living in Israel have the right to govern and defend themselves? If you believe that they do, you're a Zionist. And that's important, because I want you to understand that an overwhelming majority of our Katins, Humboldt Countyans, Californians, and Americans agree with you on this issue. And the reason I'm bringing it up is because I believe that the Zionist question is really a question about democracy. Even if there really was overwhelming support for an official partnership with Hamas in Arcata, it would still be important to ask whether the fate of the world's largest Jewish population should be decided by democratically elected leaders like yourselves. And I don't need to remind you that the responsibility of an elected official extends to the interests of minorities, including the Jewish population here, and not just to the demands of a pitchfork mob like the one you've been facing for months now. Today, death to the Jews is disguised as just death to Israel, but hopefully this time, the American institution of democracy will hold up against it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please come forward. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pat, and I'm from Eureka. I just have two short things. Please divest from Calpers because of the fact that, right now, Israel is bombing Syria, and Israel and US are giving aid to the Palestinians, and then they're shooting them when they try to get that aid. So please divest from Calpers and divest from Israel because they're killing people. The second thing I wanted to talk about is the homeless encampment that is being raided, which I understand that it's private land, and it might be illegal, but the problem is that they've been there for years, and all of a sudden they decided to raid. And you're not helping the homeless situation by doing this. In fact, I think it's illegal to chase homeless people out when there's nowhere else to go. So I'm asking you to please, if APD is going to raid this place, at least give them some time, like a couple of weeks to find someplace else to live. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name's Erin McKenna. I'm an active member of the disc golf community here in Humboldt, and I know that this item was on the closed meeting earlier, but I just wanted to let you guys know that that property that you're considering buying, it's used by more than just disc golfers, like it's a really good access point for mountain bikers, hikers, horseback riders, as well as disc golfers. It feels like it's already owned by the city. It's used so often. I think there's thousands of users every year that use that parcel. And if the city, or if that parcel remains private, then there's going to be issues with the public using it, such as trespassing, and that could really avoid a lot of headache if the city buys that parcel. So that's pretty much all I have to say, and appreciate you guys.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And we, and I just should say that, because I didn't report out, but we did have a closed session, and during the closed session, there was nothing to report out. So we will go on to our next speaker, please.
Hi, good evening. I'm Gracie. I live here in Arcata. And I also wanted to talk about the encampment that APD is threatening to sweep immediately. I just received a letter yesterday, and the letter doesn't have a date, it just says that they must be removed immediately. And they've been there for many years, and without providing adequate housing for them or a place to go, it seems unjustful for them to just be taken somewhere else where they have been living there. And it's, and it's an open area, like it shouldn't be considered a private property. If they've been there so many years, I forget what the law is, but if they've been some certain amount of years, that they should be allowed to stay there. And if not, they should have a replacement of adequate housing. And having threats to be arrested for misdemeanor of trespassing doesn't seem like adequate punishment. So, and I also want to say thank you to the people that have commented about Calpers, about divesting from weapons manufacturing that have been used to commit genocide by Israel to Palestinians in Palestine, in occupied Palestine. And I encourage the people that have not sent their letters to please follow through and send your letters. You can make a difference. Like every single one of your opinions counts. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Susan Parsons. I want to show my gratitude and my concern tonight. I want to thank the council for deciding through respectful dialogue how to use city resources. Thank you for realizing dreams through collaboration, such as the Arcata-Eureka Bike Trail, and city eco projects such as Redwoods Park Upgrade and Marsh Filtration Upgrade, the former Little Lake Industries Milk Cleanup Project and Steel Waterline Replacement Project. Thank you for the renovated Arcata Ballpark. The list goes on. I am so grateful for this fine city and council. I am concerned, however, about council time being overly used by people who scream, disrespect, and have intimidated in order to silence or attempt to silence dissent and force others to conform to their in-group and their insistence that you make Arcata a sister city with Gaza City. It is high time to take the sister city proposal off the agenda once and for all, and to stop giving oxygen to the group misnamed Justice for Palestine, a group that affirms the use of armed resistance. One of its chants is "Globalize the Intifada," which we can hear right here in our local town. That chant threatens our city. This group alienates desperately needed allies in the cause to realign Palestine. Their diatribes are inflammatory, they harm the Palestinian cause, they harm the democratic process. They are false allies. They are an embarrassment to the pro-Palestine, anti-Hamas movement. If this city and these people want to really help Gazans, then please write down these two names. Ahmed, A-H-M-E-D. Al, A-L. Hatib, K-H-A-T-I-B.
Thank you very much for your comments this evening. I appreciate it. Our next speaker, please.
Heather, good evening. My name is Santiago Espinoza. I'm also an active member for the disc golf community here in Humboldt. We're really excited about the potential of acquiring the property that has part of the course that's been around since, I believe, 1986 or so. Just for reference, the course, the past couple of years, has been on the top 100, like best courses in the, in the world. So just, you know, it'd be really exciting to see that place actually get permanent instead of being separated in different parcels. But yeah, thank you for your time.
Well, thank you very much for your comments. And may we go on to Zoom now, please?
Yes, we have several hands raised, just to check in on time right now.
We have one, one more, or two more we have to throw.
Oh, I noticed that we started at basically.
Two more speakers?
Six thirty, and I thought we had time for a couple more people.
Okay, thank you. In that case, Ellen, please go ahead.
I'm calling to thank Sarah and Kim for their comments about not wanting to be invested in war and genocide at the last City Council meeting, and for asking your fellow council members to discuss this with you further. The city of Arcata's investment policy calls for socially responsible investing, including, quote, "to prohibit investment in corporations with a record of gross ecological and environmental degradation, or corporations that invest in countries that have gross violations of human rights." Additionally, one of the investment objectives in the policy is, quote, "to invest public funds in a manner that contributes to the well-being and enrichment of the community." As we've explained to you, the Public Employee Retirement Fund, Calpers, has invested $1.6 billion in companies profiting from Israel's genocide of Palestinians, and we do not want the city's money going towards those companies. I hope that all of you will take action tonight by sending the letter drafted for you to the Calpers Board of Directors. It is the least you can do to attempt to bring yourselves back into alignment with your own investment policy, which you all adopted in September 2024. You can find the letter at divesthumboldt.wordpress.com, and everyone can follow us at @divesthumboldt on Instagram for updates. Very soon, there will also be a petition where folks can sign on to the letter to Calpers directly, so be on the lookout for that. This week, The New York Times, a notorious propaganda mouthpiece for the Zionist entity, published an op-ed by an Israeli genocide scholar that says Israel is committing genocide in Gaza. This is just one more voice added to the many other genocide scholars and human rights organizations, and Palestinians, and compassionate humans everywhere who have been making the same statement for the last 21 months. There is no debate about this fact. Israel is committing its own Holocaust on the Palestinian people.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Alice, please go ahead.
Thank you so much. I am an active community member and teacher in Arcata. I wanted to thank you, Sarah and Kim, for your comments at the last meeting. I appreciate wholeheartedly that you understand that as our local government, you have an obligation to your constituents to do everything in your power to stand up against the Holocaust that is happening in Palestine as we speak. And I hope with every fiber in my being that the entire council will do their due diligence, as Sarah has, and send in their letters to Calpers to demand they divest from companies supporting Israel and profiting from the atrocities, the atrocious horrors that the Israeli occupation is committing and has been committing since 1948. I feel like if we don't stand up right now, we are ignoring reality. And the reality is that 82% of Israelis believe that there are no innocents in Gaza. So it's up to us and all other countries to intervene and support Palestinians as they fight for their freedom, their self-determination, their sovereignty on their native land. I would also like to ask that the sanctuary city of Arcata treat all of our community with respect. The threat of an immediate sweep to our unhoused community is inhumane and not aligned with the aspirations of what a sanctuary city actually is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So with that, we will close our public hearing, the first part of our public hearing. And we will continue with our council meeting. The next item will be Consent Calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the City Council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading, the consent calendar, council members can request an item to be removed for separate discussion. Members of the public may comment on any item remaining on the consent calendar in the comment period before the vote. A, approval to waive reading of texts and consent to read by title only for any ordinance on this agenda. B, approve the minutes of the City Council Special Meeting of June 18, 2025. C, approve the minutes of the City Council Meeting of June 18, 2025. D, approve the minutes of the City Council Special Meeting of June 30, 2025. E, approve the minutes of the City Council Special Meeting Study Session of June 30, 2025. F, bi-weekly report on disbursements. G, adopt ordinance number 1580 and ordinance of the City Council of the city adding Section 3200 to designate fire hazard severity zones to Chapter 1, Fire Prevention and Fire Protection of Title III Public Safety of the Arcata Municipal Code. H, accept a donation of $5,000 to Friends of the Arcata Marsh for the Marsh Groundkeeper's Forest Technician Position. I, approve the project plan and award a construction contract for Arcata Community Center Roofing of the solar project to Michael A. Roberts Construction in the amount of $554,528.2 and approve necessary associated related actions. J, award a contract in the amount of $89,246 to Cal Poly Humboldt Sponsored Programs Foundation for Academic Engineering Services at the Arcata Marsh Treatment Facility, and authorize the city manager to add contingencies to and execute the contract. K, adopt resolution number 256-01, approve the fiscal year 2025/2026 annual report on stormwater drainage maintenance fee for all non-tax exempt parcels, and directing that the said fee be collected through the property tax rolls for fiscal year 2025/2026. L, adopt resolution number 245-48 to amend management and confidential class payment, and adopt resolution 24-49 to amend management and confidential supplemental composition and benefits. M, adopt fiscal year 2025/2026 legislative platform. Is there anything on this consent calendar a council member would like to remove?
I don't want to remove the item, but I just want to highlight H is yes. I'm thrilled. That's it.
Anyone like to remove anything from the consent calendar?
I think that we're going to pull the minutes from, that would have been the June 18 regular meeting minutes, item C, because there were some requested updates that be made, and maybe it would be better to discuss that a little bit further.
So that's item C. All right, we'll remove item C. Are there any other, no other comments? Is it possible to adopt the consent calendar minus C?
Can we take comment on the consent calendar, please?
Could we, I guess, I was going to ask for a motion, but go ahead.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary, and I had the opportunity to spend a lot of time here reading a hard copy of the agenda background on the consent calendar items yesterday, sitting here in the lobby of the City Hall, and it's all very fascinating. And I wanted to talk about, and I encourage people to look online at some of this background stuff, and if not, come in here and read it like I do on paper. But I and J are the two things. The solar project for the community center, I'm glad we're looking at re-roofing and putting a different type of energy source on the roof. And while we're at it, I hope that people are talking to Health Sport, which has long been an issue for me when their roof is not solarized at all, and they are a big energy-consuming building there. So hopefully, they'll be influenced by what they're doing on the community center. A lot of money, but hopefully it'll pay off for the community in its climate action plan. That's good to see. Item J, the Cal Poly Humboldt sponsored programs. I saw some of the interesting projects that will be worked on by students and faculty about the wastewater treatment plant. I just want to mention that there was a speaker who spoke a few meetings ago about why we aren't doing methane capture for energy on our sewage treatment plant, and I would like to see that as being something to be looked at when we're talking about alternative energy sources. So methane capture at the sewage treatment plant might be an interesting academic-sponsored program from the institute, because that is the future, finding alternative ways to capture our waste energy and turn it into something we can use.
Thank you very much. So just a moment, let me adjust this. Okay?
Okay, good evening. I'm going to address item J, the wastewater treatment plant. My concern is there's just been a steady increase in cost on this, and this particular one isn't, it's kind of a. one isn't, it's kind of a small, one of the smaller ones actually. But is there a budget for this wastewater treatment plant? Because it just, it just, you know, I don't know, once a month or two months, we get, you know, another big increase in it. So I seem to recall when Stacy was mayor and this contractor was awarded this, that, you know, the first two rows over here were, had all their employees and a lot of time was spent with each one of them telling us how, you know, this project was going to be, you know, pretty much on budget and maybe a little 3% up increase was what was voted on that evening. But it has gone a lot further than that ever. I mean, we're at 67 million, I believe. And, you know, there's also a Phase 2, which I believe, you know, an estimate way back was 30 million. So we're, we're close to 100 million for what the Coastal Commission had described and, you know, when they approved Phase 1 of a very old plant in a very bad location that, you know, was going to, you know, maybe make it to about 2050 and they were approving the water quality issue. But, so I'm just like to see, you know, Phase 1, what is the, I mean, is this it or is there, there are more to it? And, and then I know there's a Phase 2. I think there was even a Phase 3 at one time. So we're just like getting way out there in the costs compared to some, something like Moro Bay, which was a brand new plant and pretty high tech where their water's so clean, they, they don't even have to discharge to the ocean, they can discharge back into the well. So it'd be nice to see something like that. Thanks.
Thank you very much. So is there anyone else that would like to speak on the consent calendar?
I do see one hand raised on Zoom.
All right, thank you.
iPhone 6, please go ahead.
Anyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to talk about consent Item G, the Fire Hazard Zones. Thank you so much for adopting those maps to the city. Me and my partner, we recently bought a home in Sunnybry and we are both college educated and have science degrees, one in atmospheric sciences and one in geology. And we understand the importance of defensible space. And I wanted to ask, does the city have any sort of evacuation plans or some sort of emergency plan in place for when a wildfire does happen? I'm sure we all saw the recent wildfires in the Palisades where, I mean, the Palisades were completely leveled and it was just an extremely chaotic time for people to leave. So I just was curious whether or not the city has any sort of plans in place for some, for an event like that. And thank you so much.
And thank you for your call. And do we have anyone else on Zoom?
No, we do not.
All right, then that will conclude that. And so I would like to again ask if we could have a motion on the consent calendar?
I will make a motion to approve, adopt the consent calendar, all items minus C.
Okay, is there a second?
I will second it and I would like to just make a comment in general, if that's okay for clarification?
Yes.
Just wanted to be clear that the agreement with Cal Poly, that is for, it's more of a research educational agreement. It has nothing to do with Phase 1 or Phase 2 as stated in our, in our packets. This has been a partnership that we've had since 2007. So this is not, it's very separate from the upgrades. That was all.
Okay, and as far as the person calling in about G, there are probably, I would suggest you call our Environmental Services Department and get more information from them on that topic. So with that, all those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? So motion carries, let's go to Item C, please, on the minutes and the correction of the minutes.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll turn that to staff for you guys to answer, but we did receive a letter with some updates and corrections, but I know we've talked about this before since we've kind of switched to the action minutes because everything is in the record on YouTube and all that. But if we deem any of those updates necessary, I'm happy to make the changes.
And that's right, we had, we had a letter from Jason Holder who asked for several detailed comments to be included into the minutes. And we explained to him the, the action minutes versus with, have a brief summary. So if anything, we included too much detail, so it wasn't appropriate to make any of the additions that were requested. And so we, I gave him a call and clarified that in an email to him. And I will note that one of the things that we saw, Councilmember Atkins Salazar may want to look at it, but one of the comments that Rhea suggested making after she re-watched the video was that it mentioned that your husband might have involvement in the project, but that it was more to be clarified, I think it should be clarified that he will be working for Danco and to avoid a potential for conflict was the reason for the recusal.
Yes, and I don't, I didn't say he would have involvement in the project because he, I don't know that he will, but I said that he would be employed by Danco and he currently is employed by Danco. So I won't be able to vote on any Danco projects, period, while he's working there.
So we would suggest making that change to the minutes, but not bringing in any of the detail that was requested by Mr. Holder.
Great, then yeah, let's make that change regarding the language around Stacy's recusal and then I will make a motion to approve Item C with the amended change.
Thank you.
Are we going to make the, you want to bring those minutes back at the next meeting or can we make those changes now?
They can be approved as amended, stated by Councilmember Shaefer.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, would you like to make a motion?
I'll second that, oh. I'll second Sarah's motion.
Okay, any other comments? Anyone in the public? Zoom?
Nobody on Zoom.
Okay, so all those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries and thank you. Then we'll go on to old business, there is no old business. We'll go on to new business. Consider approval of agreement with Humboldt Made to host the Arcata Friday Night Market in September 2025. I'll turn that over to our Assistant City Manager, Tabitha Miller, and Rosa Dixon.
Good evening. So we're going to do a quick overview of the Friday Night Market proposal and I did want to acknowledge Rosa Dixon, who most likely, if you have questions, they're going to be directed to her or Gloria Baker, who is with the Arcata Chamber, because they're going to be the sort of boots on the street, they're the ones that are actually managing, planning and doing all the legwork for this project outside of the, this piece that the city has. So I figured most of your questions are probably going to be more specific than that. So just kind of quickly to go through what this is, Friday Night Market is currently a City of Eureka event. It's a signature, signature event hosted by Humboldt Made and the City of Eureka and it takes place in the Eureka Historic Old Town. The Arcata proposal is a little bit different. It would have the same beer garden featuring the local breweries, wineries and distilleries. We're looking at a smaller number of vendors, it would be 60 vendors, most likely 10 of those would be food oriented, but it would include the typicals, the farmers market, arts, music, food and community organizations. And then we are offering our plaza businesses the option to have a booth within the, the, okay. I, I think it's a screen issue to, so everybody else can see the presentation.
Why don't you wait a moment? You think you're okay?
Okay, perfect.
Okay, thank you.
So the, the plaza businesses would have the opportunity to actually have a booth in the Friday Night Market if they chose to. And those businesses that might be outside of the plaza that would be, could participate in some additional exposure after parties or additional events to sort of bring some business to them from the market. So who's sponsoring it? So Humboldt Made, Arcata Chamber of Commerce and the City of Arcata would be sponsoring it. And of course, the local makers, food vendors, performance artists, musicians, nonprofits and local businesses would also be actively involved. We're also hoping that our Cal Poly students, those new and those returning to school would participate and kind of take advantage of the market. And we're projecting about 5,000 or more attendees for each market. Of course, where is the Arcata Plaza? So it would highlight the City of Arcata and the plaza and the businesses there. The when is just to let you know, the plaza area would start to be closed off to traffic between 4:00 and 9:00 on those three Friday nights. It would be September 5th, September 12th and September 26th, and we would operate it from 5:00 to 8:00 PM based on the fact that it's a little bit shorter days come September. So the why is really to celebrate Arcata, our culture and our local offerings and to sort of give an opportunity to support our local economy, the local businesses, feature Humboldt products, welcome Cal Poly students back, and then also support for Arcata Chamber of Commerce and for Humboldt Made. It's really just to highlight everything wonderful about Arcata. And the, the how is really why we're here tonight and it's the decision that you all will be making, which is the support for it. So Humboldt Made did, did provide the proposal, they've outlined a lot of the specifics about it and of course are here to answer more detailed questions if you have it, but they're the ones that are going to arrange for all the detailed toilets, security, stage and sound, sanitation, trash, staffing and insurance and outreach. They do all the organization. And they would be paid a stipend of 2,500 per night for a total of $7,500. And the city would also make a contribution to the logistic piece of it, really more about the pre-event cleaning, helping close and make sure that the plaza gets closed in an orderly fashion, coordinating any public safety needs or involvement, and then obviously reopening the street after the market is completed. And we estimate that the staffed cost of staff time for that would be about $2,000 each Friday night for a total of 6,000. And the total here would be a $13,500 expense, you know, out of pocket to the city and that's really what we're asking for the council's approval for tonight. It would come out of your, the budget that we've set aside for economic development, which is currently at $269,000. A reminder that a chunk of that money is, has been set aside for the strategic economic plan, but you do have sufficient available budget if you are so inclined to approve this project this evening. And with that, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions or deflect to Gloria or Rosa.
We did receive a letter from the North Country Fair concerned about the fact that this may take away from their ability to enhance the people that participate in that. And I think the letter that Rosa wrote, you all got copies of it, I want to make sure of that. So I just wanted to mention that so that the North Country Fair knows that we are concerned, realize that and are aware of it. So thank you. Would you like to say anything about this, Rosa?
Well, I've been in the executive director position now for about 10 months and I did not really know what I was getting into and I definitely didn't realize I was going to be doing these large-scale community events. My passion has always been in growing and supporting local business and I own a local business. And so starting Friday Night Market for me was terrifying in Eureka. It was something that's been going, you know, three executive directors before me worked on it and I got to inherit it and it has been one of the most incredible things I've ever experienced in my life. I look forward to going to Eureka every single Friday night. I get there really early between 1:00 and 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon. I'm so excited for the night to happen, the energy and the community that comes together for this event, I've never seen anything like it in Humboldt County. And so the idea is to spread that incredible passion that the artists have, the artisans have, the food vendors have, the local businesses and the community into Arcata is so exciting to me, so.
Thank you very much. And so I'll ask council members, do you have questions for Sarah?
Yeah, I'm really excited about this and so thank you to Humboldt Made and to the Chamber for bringing this, you know, and I know people have always talked about, yeah, seeing this market in different locations around the county. So this is a really exciting start to it. I think it's really great to have it in September when students are back and to really, you know, be able to show off all of these great local products, local businesses, things that Arcata has going on. I'd be really excited to move forward with this proposal. The one question that I really wanted to ask is what plans you guys have around waste mitigation and zero waste efforts? I know that we ask a lot of the Chamber when they put on events like Oyster Fest and 4th of July, that they're, you know, working to be zero waste. We ask a lot of our farmers markets, they work really closely with Bright and Green and with other, you know, local organizations to make sure that waste is mitigated. So I wanted to see, I didn't see much in the proposal about what your guys' plans would be for that and how we can make this a zero or at least waste less event.
Yes, absolutely, and I can let Glow speak more to that, but it's something I'm passionate about personally and so I love that Arcata kind of has this already in place. So I've never experienced, you know, doing an event in Arcata, but I've talked with Gloria quite a bit and kind of how they do it with Oyster Fest. And so what we have in Eureka is we have a clean team and they're a team of eight to 10 and they deal with all the trash and the recycling and they sort it and they do an excellent job. This is a hired team. So we plan on implementing that same team and kind of following the guidelines that they have experienced at Oyster Fest. I think that this has come about really fast, so I would like to kind of really spend the next six weeks putting a strong plan in place, but we will meet all the expectations that the city has and will be really excited about doing it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, Stacy, do you have anything?
I do, thank you. I am also very excited about this. I've made it quite public that I've been envious about the Eureka markets, so I appreciate that. It'll, it will bring a lot to our community. I do appreciate the free booths for plaza businesses. I think that that will be really helpful to alleviate some concerns and I think it might be, well, just having it in a different place will bring in different folks that maybe haven't journeyed to Eureka or are unable to. And also that it will be a little smaller, that might bring in a different crowd too, people that are interested in it but would like it on a smaller scale. So I appreciate that and also your commitment to, you know, partnering with Gloria to work on the zero waste aspect because that is becoming a standard that people are expecting to see. So thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly?
Everybody has already mentioned my, what I was going to say, so just piggyback on that, I'm excited about it. I did have a question with regards to the partnership that you're looking from Arcata. Is that similar to what you are doing with Eureka? And then when that one is finished, it'll just kind of come on over here, correct?
Sorry.
Those two questions, sorry.
Yes, exactly. So the financial partnership is identical to our Eureka partnership, so, you know, we want to keep it all equal. And that's about 50% of the cost of putting on each event. So Humboldt Made covers the other 50% and then we request for the partnership with the city. So the City of Eureka was only able to do 12 markets this year and that is different than previous years. They were able to do all of September as well, so that was 16 markets. So, you know, when this kind of came about, we were like, well, that actually could work out perfect because that was our biggest complaint from the community is why are we stopping, you know, at the end of August? Why aren't we continuing into September? And I think it gives Arcata such an amazing opportunity to really get the students down to the plaza and that's a big thing. And I think that that's always kind of a barrier. And so I have a meeting with Cal Poly next week, we're talking about partnerships. What I'm proposing to them is I want a shuttle running up and down from the plaza to Cal Poly, you know, like let's show those new students what Arcata's really like. And so I think that's going to be really exciting. Hopefully they, hopefully they're into it. I already, you know, put in my email and I just, I think that getting to show that, so yes, it will, it is the same and it is ending in Eureka and it would be picking up in Arcata.
And hopefully this will become a long-term in the future.
Yeah, that's what I think too. And, you know, that was the vision of Friday Night Markets when it was, first came about in 2017 was it would be a moving market. So it'd be a month in Arcata, a month in Eureka, a month in Blue Lake, a month in, you know, Southern Humboldt. And then Eureka just kind of became the home and they've been an incredible partnership. And they also really supported us doing it in Arcata as well. And I want to say that that was such an impressive thing for me to talk with the Eureka staff and them say, absolutely, we are all in this together as a community and let's share it, so.
And so it is a possibility, we see how we do in September and we may want to think about May next year, is that we could be on the shoulders of that event. So is anyone in here in the audience that would like to speak on this item? If so, please come to the podium.
Hello?
Hello. My name's Joanne McGary, and there's three things about this that I'd like to speak on. I'm excited about it. I'm excited that Arcata can be a new model for this, to be honest with you. I do want to share that the North Country Fair is truly, along with Oyster Fest, events in Arcata that people come to and learn from. And Friday night markets could be that in addition. We did a lot of effort. I was the person who started a Bright and Green project, and Carly took it over about a year and a half ago, and I'm very pleased that she's running with it and doing so much, because I didn't want to do that myself. So, I went to my first Friday night market last week. I'd been to them in years prior. I brought my own reusable silicone pint and hut, put a Humboldt Made sticker on it, because I'm staring at the beer booth with the clear plastic glasses, and that's really for Arcata and for the students going to Cal Poly who are going to be coming into the campus, taking a pledge, a green pledge, as opposed to waiting until graduation. There's efforts being made for those students to learn the ethic that Arcata is known for in terms of doing things differently, better, and for the planet. So, I would really like this Friday market, if you're getting money from Arcata, we don't want to generate a whole lot of waste like there is generated in Eureka with those plastic cups and disposable things. So, I really do want Arcata to stand out in that way. The university could really be involved. They give out these things to the new students every year, and they could pick them up when they come down to the fair. We could work out things to keep those trash cans emptier, which is really the motto that we should be doing, because I want to remind everybody here, a climate action plan is supposedly coming into effect very, very soon, and waste reduction is part of that. So, I think Arcata can be on the cutting edge of this effort, along with the North Country Fair and Oyster Fest, to really show we do it differently and better.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Well, I do.
I'm sorry?
I was just going to say there are, there are a few hands on Zoom.
Okay.
iPhone 6, please go ahead.
Hello. I just would like to thank the city council for listening to this. I graduated from Humboldt State in 2022, and one of the main reasons why I ended up staying in Arcata is for all those wonderful events that we have, like Oyster Fest and the North Country Fair and Ferry Festival. And I do think that this is such a great opportunity to continue bringing the community together here in Arcata and supporting local businesses and just making like a really beautiful, safe space for everyone to enjoy and welcoming. So, I really do appreciate that the city council is considering this, because this is a wonderful opportunity for us. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'm wondering if Rosa or Gloria would like to answer a question about cups?
I can answer. Yes, thank you. I should have been more detailed. So we are going to use reusable cups. That's already been decided. I'm so happy the Chamber has.
We still have Oyster Fest cups.
Yeah, so we're recycling, reusing, and reusing. So it's a win-win for everyone. You know, every city has different rules, and in Eureka, they have to have clear plastic cups, because EPD needs to be able to see what's in the cups. So that's their rule. So it's just, it's a different for each city. That was the first thing we talked about. And I'm really excited to not use plastic cups. So, we will have recyclable cups, and they are from Oyster Fest, so, excited.
So thank you for that. And you had a question?
No, I was just going to thank Joanne for championing the Bright and Green and getting that going and passing the baton, and it's awesome. So glad that that happened.
So thank you very much for the presentation. And yes, do you have another person?
There's two more hands raised on Zoom.
Please proceed.
Thank you. MC, please go ahead.
Hi, yes. I think the plan for a Friday night market is also a really good one. I think it ties in with the tourism thing and the hotel thing. But I, you know, and in bringing in the students as well is a great idea to, you know, really get the community together. Unfortunately, there's an underside to this that I think is lacking from a lot of these conversations about how the wider community is treated, specifically the unhoused community. There was a trespass notice to evict for an encampment in the area. And, you know, I think it sends a really bad message to be treating some of the community one way whilst trying to celebrate how together the community is. And, you know, I think it ties in with the Gaza City thing as well, that, you know, with tourism, the, you know, the majority of the world has acknowledged that what's going on in Israel and what they're doing to Palestine is unacceptable. And for an area like this to take a strong stance on recognizing that, you know, arguments for Zionism are essentially arguments for ethno-nationalism. And, you know, I think we can all agree that nations ran on ethnic nationalism have, are fundamentally flawed. We've learned this through history many times that nations should be based on protecting the rights of their citizens, no matter what their ethnicity is, no matter what the ethnicity of their neighbors.
So, you know, I'm going to probably end your conversation, because this is actually about Humboldt Made and the Friday night market in Arcata. And now you're talking about other items, and I understand that, but I want to thank you very much for your comment. And we have another person on Zoom, please.
Arcata Arts, please go ahead. Arcata Arts, please unmute yourself.
I will call next week, because I'm not on, I have a different subject that I want to talk about. So, thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
There is one other hand raised.
Okay, please proceed.
Lev, please go ahead.
Hi, I'm Lev. I live in Arcata. I think doing the Friday night market in Arcata is a good idea, but I don't think the city should help pay for it. I think the city should focus on the more fundamental needs of the community with that budget. The business owners are going to benefit from it. Chamber of Commerce is going to benefit from it. Let them pay for it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have anyone else on Zoom?
No.
All right, thank you. I'm going to bring it back to the council now, and I was wondering if we would have a motion to approve the agreement with Humboldt Made by anybody on the council? Okay, well, that doesn't sound good.
We're just looking at the motion on here, making sure we do it right.
Yeah, I don't have that right page up, so I think.
Yeah, so I will make a motion, a motion to approve the agreement and partnership with Humboldt Made to host the Friday night markets on September 5th, 12th, and 26th in Arcata on the plaza.
Thank you very much. Is there a second to this motion?
May I interrupt before the second? I'm just seeing language here regarding authorizing the city manager to execute all applicable documents.
I definitely authorize the city manager to also execute all applicable documents.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Yes, I will second that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And all those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. And thank you very much for coming and.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear Stacy.
Being very successful for Arcata.
I think I forgot to vote. I'm sorry, I was reading. Yes, aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
So thank you all. So we're going to move on to now to item B, which is initiate adoption of the comprehensive update to the city local coastal program, statutory exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, guideline section 15265. Thank you, Director Loia.
Yeah, good evening, mayor and council members. I don't know if you had an opportunity to review the planning commission's hearing on this item from last week. If you did, I will keep my staff report exceedingly brief. The long and the short of it is that we intended to bring the local coastal program to you. We received comments from the coastal commission's staff that they had some changes that they'd like to see that we need to discuss in further detail that can't be adopted through conditions of approval of their certification. And so at this point, I'm requesting that the city council continue this item to October 15th, when we would bring that item back for adoption with those amendments that we coordinate with the coastal commission staff. Staff is committed to this three-month timeline with the city of Arcata, and I think we're all committed to getting it done in that timeframe. So, I do apologize to the council and the community for slight delay in adoption, but I think we're on track to coordinate well.
Thank you. Are there questions from the council before we take public comment? Is there anyone in the audience or on Zoom that would like to comment on this?
I was wondering, David, were you going to do a shortened version of the staff report for those who maybe did not get a chance to listen to the planning commission?
That was, that was the gist of it. My staff report was the gist of it, yeah.
Okay, thanks. So go ahead, please.
Yeah, I was just hoping there could be a little bit more detail on, there's three months now that before this is going to come back to the council. And so, you know, what happened between coastal commission staff that changed everything, because it seemed like you were ready to vote on it tonight. So, I'm kind of guessing a little bit about that, and it seemed like there was this, they wanted more time for, you know, for the public to comment on this. And just from the standpoint of showing up in the last joint session, and there was only two of us in the audience, and then tonight, there's only myself that's really talking about it. It's kind of feels like it's fizzling a little bit from the public standpoint of, you know, being involved and interest and stuff. So, it would be, I think it'd be healthy to know exactly, a little bit more of, you know, how is the public going to be involved the next three months? How is, what is the staff mission that's going to change from what wasn't satisfied, I guess, for the, I'm guessing with the coastal commission, why we're having this period? And so, I'm still wondering what, or exactly what's going on so that, you know, if I want to participate, I can, I can do my best, you know, and not, not guess about the whole thing. And the other thing about this, too, is that, you know, there's some big changes in, that are going to happen in, like, the Beryl District, for example. And it was almost a year ago that you voted for the general plan 2045 and the gateway, and the standards of coverage for the fire as part of that. And you were only a couple of months away at that time from that being published. And I'm wondering about that, too. There is, there's been nothing published on that, and I'm imagining that it's, that it's been completed. So it kind of leaves people in the dark from the standpoint of how they're going to be involved with this to make comments if we don't even, I don't even know where that document is. So, that's another concern. And the other concern is, too, that, you know, two of you during the gateway weren't able to, you know, participate. And now with the local coastal element, a big part of this is in the gateway. So a question I would have is, is there a problem with, with our two that couldn't participate now, because this is, this is a gateway kind of, it is a gateway area? And also, I just realized that Stacy's husband is working for Danco and wondering about that part of it, too, that Danco's a big developer, and I'm sure.
Thank you very much for your comments tonight. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Please, please come forward.
Hi. My name's George Green, and I just wondered, and I didn't really follow all that was going on with the coastal situation, just read about it just around a week or so ago. Maybe I should have been more diligent. But what I wanted to ask, because I have some issues with it in the past, but in terms of like, the coastal regs as they would pertain to whether you're under the jurisdiction of the municipal code versus the guide, you know, for instance, like the categorical exclusion zones, where if somebody's in the categorical exclusion zone, the code applies, but if you're out of that, you could be in the coastal zone. Are issues like that going to change, you know, like specifically categorical exclusion zones? Or are there going to be issues where what used to be controlled by the guide, which was more stringent than the code, going to still be in effect? Or is it the code, which is less stringent, municipal code, going to supersede the guide, the coastal guide? That's what I was wanting to ask.
Thank you. Is there anybody on Zoom?
Yes. Sanai, please go ahead. Sanai?
Is this public comment?
This is public comment regarding the comprehensive update for local coastal program.
All right, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom?
Yes. Andrew, please go ahead. Oh, sorry. They lowered their hand. So nobody else on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. And does staff wish to make any comments?
Are there any public comments that came up that you want me to address? I'm happy to speak to any or all of them.
If you'd like to.
Okay, so in terms of public engagement, we've had more than a decade of public engagement on this particular draft. We've had, you know, a good solid three to five years, depending on when you count the public engagement starting. So this three-month period is really a time for staff to, to work on the comments that the coastal commission made on the document. The intent here is not to extend public comment. That's not what the coastal commission asked for. And the engagement that will be afforded to the public is through these public hearings that are noticed at this point. In terms of the Mr. Green's questions about the categorical exclusion area, I would, I would encourage you to reach out to me separately to address the very detailed questions that you have about how the regulations work. But in short, this update is intending to completely replace, repeal and replace the regulations that are on the books right now. And so pretty much everything will change.
Okay, well, thank you very much with that.
And I just wanted to thank you for adding the clarification. I think that is, it's helpful. So thank you, David.
So with that, there'll be no action taken on this, except we will be moving it to the October 15th meeting.
Yeah, we need, we need to do that as a.
Need a motion to that.
Yes, please, thank you.
So can we have someone move the, move this program to the October 15th meeting?
I will make a motion to continue the hearing to the October 15th, 2025 meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
May I interrupt real quick before the vote? Just with continuing a public hearing, we need to continue it to a place and times, a time and place certain, just to confirm that this be the 6:00 PM regular meeting in the council chamber?
Yes.
And does the second accept that?
Okay. I'm sure they all agree to those details, that it will be in the council chambers, and it will be during a regular council meeting on the October 15th. So, maybe we vote on this. All those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have another item on our agenda, which is C, and it's considered the adoption of number 256-03 to authorize establishing a public agency retirement service, PARs, 115, trust to pre-fund city pension obligations. And I've been asked, well, I would ask the city manager to please address this.
Staff would just ask that you remove this and not consider deliberation on it tonight.
So is that, how do we do that? Do you want that in the form of a motion to remove this from the agenda?
I don't think we need it removed. It's already on the agenda. I would just say the council wouldn't be taking any action on it tonight.
Is the council agreeable to this?
You?
Okay, thank you. It's been removed. It's been removed. We're going to go on to oral communications, oral and written communications. The city council values your comments. The public comment period allows people to address the council matters not on the agenda. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. So please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items not listed on the agenda. The council may respond to comments. So several people called in on oral communications through Zoom, and this would be your time to participate. So thank you for coming to the podium. Please, go ahead.
My name is Bryce Parker. I made a fully documented video that's on Access Humble YouTube titled Does the City of Arcata Could Don't Homophobia, Sexual Abuse, and Classism? I have an op ed in the Mad River Union dated July second. You have to click on the July second op ed to see it called Anti-Gay Arcata. After COVID was shut down, the flea market business, Dwayne Quilla, local UROC, and LGBTQ was the driving force getting the Arcata and Eureka flea markets up and running. A local reporter texted me that the Arcata City, City of Arcata Parks and Recreation Department supervisor told him, he said, he tried to reach out to Dwayne to fill out paperwork, and someone else approached him with an almost identical idea. Dwayne has no record of a phone call, text message, or email from Colin Groom or any other city official. In my July second op ed in the Mad River Union, editor's note, it says, "City Manager Merritt Perry said the City of Arcata's involvement was limited. We just rent the building," he said. Merritt Perry's statement, "We just rent the building," is 100% false. In the Lost Coast Outpost NorCal Collectors Expo December seventh event posting shows the City of Arcata Parks and Recreation Department's phone number and email as their point of contact. The City of Arcata Parks and Recreation Department was the point of contact for the April fifth event, too. "We just rent the building" is a 100% false statement. NorCal Collectors Expo, December seventh event, was a benefit for Young Life and Rebound. Wikipedia states, "Young Life was under investigation by the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission for allegedly failing to protect its employees against sexual misconduct and racial discrimination." One lady said she informed more than a dozen people about the harassment she faced, being told at one point it was God's plan for her. Hashtag do better Young Life. Reverend Mitchell W. Felton says, "Yet, as life-changing as Young Life was to my development as a black man trying to follow Jesus, I did not escape the racism and classism that is deeply embedded in the organization. Young Life's culture is toxic for black kids, and it needs to be reconciled. Dwayne's never been done before event was first. But the City of Arcata chose Young Life and Rebound's event. Then the City of Arcata promoted Young Life and Rebound's event. Then Merritt Perry made a statement, false statement, about the use of city tax dollars and resources for this event. Why? Maybe, just maybe, it was because Dwayne is a person of color and paying back Benjamin Funk for being the project leader of the City of Arcata's lawsuit settlement mural of David Josiah Lawson. You don't have to take my word for anything I said. Everything I said is documented in the Access Humble YouTube video. And if you go to Mad River Union op ed, you will see Merritt Perry's statement there. You do not have to take my word for anything. Thanks for your time."
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
I'm not very fast, sorry. I used to be fast. Okay, I am Ella from Arcata. I'm ninety-two years old. I was alive during the Second World War and the Holocaust and history since then. I strongly oppose making my beautiful Arcata a sister city to Gaza, a globally known terrorist city in Palestine. I don't have time in three minutes to give a history lesson. But since, some of you don't know and aren't care to look it up, I'll just give you a few facts. In nineteen forty-eight, after World War Two, the U N adopted a two-state proposal dividing the Arab-Jewish territory that had been under British rule into two separate states. The Jews accepted the resolution, the Arabs did not. As a result, Israel became a state, and the Arabs started a war. And that's the same war that's going on today. The first thing that the Jews did after declaring statehood was to plant trees. I want to tell you that because during the fifty, sixty's and seventy's, my children would save ten cents a week out of their allowance until they had a dollar, and then they would send a dollar to Israel to plant a tree in their name or in the memory of someone else. All Jewish, most children did that anyway. So while the Jews were planting trees, the Arabs were stockpiling weapons to kill all the Jews and take over the Jewish lands. When organizations such as the Redwood Peace and Justice Coalition state, and I quote, "Israel's ongoing barbaric massacres and illegal occupation." What illegal occupation are they talking about? Israel is living in their own legal country. Whose massacres are they talking about? Israel is defending herself against a barbaric massacre by Gazans, the same city the Redwood Peace and Justice Coalition is promoting. There have been many wars since Palestine and Israel in the years since nineteen forty-eight, all started by Palestine. These are all religious wars. If you are not one of those religions, we have no business to get into it. Palestinians do not want statehood. They have been offered statehood many times and turned it down. Why? Because they would have to agree to live in peace with Israel. What they really want is to exterminate all Jews and take over the Israeli lands. Plus, plus, they would have to give up their refugee status. And as refugees, they have been supported by the U N on my taxes. The United States has been the second-largest contributor to the U N for years, but not anymore. Our current administration is not contributing to the U N's corrupt policy of supporting terrorists. I wish to propose that this Gaza-Arcata sisterhood proposal be voted down permanently by the city council. As one of the council members stated two years ago, and I quote, "The council's mission is for the safety and security of all Arcata citizens."
Thank you very much for your comments.
I feel my safety and security has been compromised.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
My name is Jody, and I live in Arcata. I'm here again today to voice my opposition to making Gaza a sister city to Arcata. A sister city is supposed to be a place where we can share cultures. So today, I want to talk about the culture of Gaza. Let's start with the Islamist culture towards women and children under Sharia law. Women have no rights in Gaza. Women cannot go out without the permission of a man from their family or a husband. Women are treated as lesser humans in Gaza. Children are taught from birth to kill all Jews and Israelis and Americans, and the honor of schools are responsible for this horrible curriculum. Children are taught that the highest calling in life is to martyr themselves, to kill nonbelievers, and their culture celebrates this with pay-for-slay money. Women have no right to refuse anything their husbands want. They can be beaten and tortured and raped by their own husbands and family. And if they try to speak out for themselves, they can be murdered as an honor killing. Many are still victims of genital mutilation. They have to be covered from head to toe because, quote, "Men don't have any control over their urges and would rape them," unquote. At least that is the excuse men there give. Female children are sold off into marriages to pedophilic old men at eight or nine years old. This past week, an unbiased report on the atrocities of October seventh and the use of rape and sexual violence as a weapon of war was released to the public. The DINAH report, that's D I N A H. Please read it and see for yourself what this culture did of extremists did to innocent people. This is not a culture I want to bring here to Arcata. Every one of you sitting here on our city council would not be here under Gazan culture rule since you would be considered lowly women. Gaza is still an active war zone, in which women and children are being used as human shields and children taught to hate their neighbors. This culture is not compatible with my Arcata, proven by the vitriolic hate that is spewed here at each meeting by people who support them. That culture of hate is already on display here in Arcata at every meeting. There's no reason to bring even more of this hate here to our beautiful Arcata.
Thank you very much for your comments. And now, oh, yes.
Hi, my name is Joanne McGary, and I want to talk about three things. I want to talk about climate action and the climate reality. I want to talk about emergency preparedness for our community. And I want to talk about the global connection that those two things have with things like global conflicts and weapons of mass destruction. I bring this as a symbol of the global connection that we all have. So first of all, climate action. I've been speaking to the board of supervisors and finding out that the draft climate action plan is soon to be discussed. And I can't tell you how anxious I am for that to come to everyone's attention and that we can start acting upon it deliberately because it's something that we're adopting, an action plan. There was an earthquake in Alaska today, seven point three. There was a tsunami warning. I went to see if my friend in Homer was being affected, but also what it all meant for us along the West Coast. And it just reminded me, as we're talking about having events and celebrations in our community, how we really need to incorporate planning and practice of how to be prepared, planning and practice for preparation for something that might come our way. Looking at sandbag filling contests or something like that before we have to race out to the sewage treatment plant to fill the plastic bags at the last minute to make sure the floods don't come. I read a Time magazine article at the library today, and it was all about our oceans. And they're a really good canary in a coal mine for what's happening for our world in the future. Which brings me, so climate, emergency preparedness. And just a reminder for, I'd like for us to all revisit what we passed on March sixth of twenty twenty-four, yeah, twenty twenty-four, this ceasefire resolution. And it was missing the one component that is affecting our climate, which is weapons of mass destruction that are greatly harming our atmosphere and our lands and our waters. And if you go back and look at what we did, it was something, and it was important. And what a lot of us were really stressing was thinking about the children and thinking about their future, the children of the world and their future. So we did a good thing. It wasn't enough, though. And a lot of people have been talking about things we can do more, and it all is connected.
Thank you very much. And I know we have people on Zoom.
Yes, Lucas, please go ahead.
Thank you.
Lucas, I see you unmuted yourself. Can you please try talking? Sorry, we cannot hear you. I'm going to go to the next person, and maybe you can keep your hand raised. Sanai, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Sanai. I appreciate you all for keeping this community safe and the place I have grown up in. I'm an Israeli-American, and I just got back from spending two and a half months in Israel, living through an active war that's now been going on for over a year and nine months. For twelve of those days, I was under direct missile fire. That kind of experience does not leave you. It changes everything you knew. I learned what it means to live in a place where your enemies openly say they want to erase you, and still we persevere. I'm talking here not to deny the suffering of Palestinians in Gaza. It's real. But we can't ignore who's keeping that suffering in place, Hamas. This terror regime does not want peace. They carried out the October seventh massacre. They still hold fifty hostages, including an American. And they continue to fire rockets while hiding behind civilians. And it's not just Israelis who want Hamas gone. Palestinians in Gaza are speaking out, protesting Hamas at huge personal risk. Many are arrested, tortured, or killed. Hamas is trying to silence them. We must not let their voices die. Establishing a sister city with Gaza right now, while Hamas is still in power, sends the wrong message. It does not promote peace. It legitimizes a regime that is actively working to destroy it. I've spoken to my brothers and sisters in Israel, Jews and Arabs. And what's clear is this, they want peace. According to a recent poll, eighty-two percent support an end to the war in a hostage deal. They do not care for performative activism or trendy narratives. Our people care about life, about true dignity in ending this war, not extending it for the Kaffiyah Karen's of the West who weaponize our suffering. Please don't listen to those who want to keep our people divided. Listen to those who live it every single day. A sister city should represent shared values, not shared enemies. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your name. Sidara, please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Sidara, and I'm speaking to strongly oppose the proposal for Arcata adopt Gaza as a sister city. In June twenty twenty-four, the city council of Arcata passed a resolution proclaiming June as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer-plus pride month. That resolution affirmed Arcata's commitment to the safety, dignity, and inclusion of LGBTQ people like myself. That's why this proposal for a sister city with Gaza is so upsetting. In Gaza, LGBTQ people like myself live in fear. Being gay, lesbian, or transgender isn't just stigmatized, it's dangerous. People like myself are arrested, abused, and killed for who they are and who they love. Many are forced into hiding. Some are beaten by their own families. Coming out publicly can mean a death sentence. There are no legal protections and no safety. There is no pride. Forming a sister city relationship with Gaza under these conditions sends a terrible message. It says that we're willing to overlook the brutal treatment of LGBTQ-plus people in order to make a political statement. But you guys can't proclaim pride month in June and then partner with a government that punishes people for being LGBTQ-plus in July. That's not equity, it's hypocrisy. And beyond the moral contradiction, proposals like this have deeply divided cities across California. In San Francisco, former Mayor London Breed refused to sign a similar resolution, saying it inflamed division and hurt the community. In Berkeley, the mayor warned that similar votes spammed flames of hatred at home. Arcata should not follow in those footsteps. We're a small city with big local challenges, homelessness, housing insecurity, climate change, and clearly the need to restore unity. That's where your attention and our attention should be. If you really care about human rights, we can't align with governments that persecute LGBTQ-plus people. Let's live up to the values that you and we just reaffirmed last month and keep our focus on what truly matters here at home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Yes, just one moment here. Divest, please go ahead.
Thank you, Sarah, for sending your letter to CalPERS. One out of five representatives that kids can feel safe around. I don't know how to respond to our own city council members not divesting from racism and killing to protect kids like me. If you can't handle the horrible truth of what is going on and make the right decision, then I think we need decent and honorable people to be our city council members. You are in the position to make, to help make a safer world. But how can my siblings and I feel safe when we, as Palestinian-Americans, are living in a world that wants to make us feel like we're wrong to be ourselves? But I am not. I am a proud Palestinian. I should not have to ask you this as a kid. You should have known this a long time ago. But divest from the genocide and the Holocaust happening to Palestinians that the U S is making happen. It's the right decision for the world and. It's the right decision for the world and it's the right decision for the world we want to live in. No more talk about making money off of killing kids in Palestine. Make money in a peaceful way or give the job to someone who will protect kids. Divest.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Jasmine, please go ahead.
Hello. I'm speaking today to address some of the recent and disturbing ways that Arcata is choosing to displace and criminalize our unhoused residents here. I'm going to start by pointing out the increased and excessive police presence around the plaza lately. I was standing on the plaza, watching an unhoused person get a ticket for a dog that was on a leash. And when I turned my body the other direction, there were people who looked housed that had two dogs on leashes, not getting any kind of police interaction. Think of this as like one of those side-by-side images where you need to spot the differences. And I think it's pretty clear what the difference is, is one person looked unhoused and the other did not. Next, I would like to address the lack of safe and stable places for unpeople, unhoused people to exist in Arcata. Yesterday, an unhoused person found a no trespassing sign, stabbed onto a piece of wood outside of his camp with a knife from the Arcata Police Department. The message being sent by your police department is that Arcata is not a safe place to live if you're unhoused. I urge the Arcata City Council to call on your police department to stop discriminatingly ticketing unhoused people and stop displacing people who have no other place to go.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Arcata Arts, please go ahead. Arcata Arts, please unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. I would like to just, I really want to tell you that I'm very excited to hear about the expansion of the, potential expansion anyway, of the Arcata Farmer's Market and the idea that it could get even better than it is now. It's one of the wonderful things about living here. As far as this, this constant drumbeat about Gaza and the war in the Middle East, the only country that we seem to focus on here. Can we, can we table this, please? This is, this has absolutely nothing to do with governing the city of Arcata. Nothing to do with it. Council members, please focus on our actual city business. Our schools, our roads, the police, the transportation, our Marsh, our university. They deserve your undivided attention. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
iPhone 6, please go ahead.
Hello there. You know, it's, it's just really infuriating to hear, you know, for lack of better words, just a bunch of bigots in the audience who are giving Israel a pass to just carpet bomb all of these children, all of these families. I mean, let us not forget that Israel is committing genocide and Israel is committing a Holocaust and has murdered 60,000 people. Israel does not have clean hands. Their hands are stained with blood. And just like we had held Germany accountable for the Holocaust and genocide that they have committed against the Jews, we are holding Israel accountable for the genocide and Holocaust that they are ironically committing against the Palestinian people. Israel is not an innocent child in this playground. Israel is actively murdering people and trying to involve other countries to get them on their side, to justify their murder of everyone else. You know, it's just very disheartening to hear multiple people in the audience stand in solidarity with Israel when they are just forgetting the fact of what Israel is doing. And so I just personally find that extremely infuriating. Israel is a fascist state. And Israel has rapidly risen to a fascist state. And honestly, America is also rising to become a fascist state with Trumpism in this country, promoting hatred in this country too. So I just would like to point that out. One last quick thing. I have also noticed a increased police presence in the Arcata Plaza. And it is deeply disturbing on how the Arcata Police treat the unhoused people. I was recently at Oyster Fest and there were two unhoused people sitting on the bench, enjoying the Jubilee, sorry, I was at the Jubilee, enjoying the Jubilee like everyone else. And one of the police officers was just constantly harassing them and made them move from the bench. You know, and I am deeply disappointed at the amount of police presence in the plaza targeting unhoused people. And I think it's something that the City Council needs to address. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Lev, please go ahead.
Hi there. My name is Lev, local Jew here in Arcata. I want to address the threatened sweep of the encampment. Do not do this sweep. Abusing and displacing unhoused folks is an inappropriate use of police resources. Sweeps don't help address the homelessness crisis. They merely move the problem around and they exacerbate the instability and social dislocation that the unhoused suffer from. They make it more difficult for social workers to find unhoused persons and connect them to services. I also affirm what others said about the police presence in the plaza doesn't make me feel safer and moreover, the vibes are off. Do not threaten homeless folks with knives. Instead, take that knife, grab a fork, and head to Don's Donuts. Switching gears, you can respect the nation and its right to exist without affirming its right to pursue a senseless and genocidal war. So that's why I want you to divest from Calpers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next speaker, please.
Amy G, please go ahead. Amy, please unmute yourself. Amy Gaskill, please unmute yourself.
Oh my God, can you hear me? So sorry.
Yes.
Oh, okay. I want to say thanks to Sarah for sending the letter to Calpers. I want to thank him for her comments at the last meeting regarding divestment from Calpers. I would really, really encourage all members of the City Council to send the letters since it's been created for you. I was looking at the City of Arcata Investment Policy, Section 3, Subsection E, and it details the socially responsible investment goals. My, my goal had been to read that all back to you, but I am driving now, so I can't do that. But I know that you all have it close at hand. I'd like to say I'm also, I want all of the incredibly racist, bigoted people who have been speaking recently to know that as a member of this community, as a mother, as a birth and postpartum doula working in Humboldt County, I'm doing everything I can to combat your ugly rhetoric that has no place in our community. Children in Gaza are being shot in the head as they wait for food and water. There's no time to table this. This is of the utmost importance. There is nothing else that matters more than stopping a genocide, than stopping this Holocaust of the Palestinian people. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Amy Scott, please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to start, and I want to ask the folks at the City Council and the folks at home listening to just take a deep breath. I came here with a very specific purpose, something to speak to tonight. And I forget that every time I come to this meeting, I leave with my heart so heavy with the immensity of the cruelty with which people can speak about other human beings. We are all connected. This is one earth here. We have this one beautiful earth. And we have to figure out a way to live on it, to not harm it, and to not harm each other. And I don't understand why that's so goddamn hard. To say that, to say that what's happening in Palestine has nothing to do with what's happening here shows the extent to which dehumanization is rooted at the core of our being in this colonialist, capitalist, sick country. We are harmed when others are being harmed. Our souls are harmed. We have moral injury from witnessing the cruelty with which people treat one another. Witnessing. And this is not made up like... Every major international organization, Amnesty International, the United Nations, the ICC, has all condemned Israel for this. I don't understand what we're arguing about here. How have we lost such faith in these institutions that we were part of creating so that never again really was never again? And this is directly connected to the way that we, this witnessing this kind of dehumanization every day allows us to then do that to people in our community. Allows us to treat folks who are struggling, who are experiencing the harms of this world and responding in maladaptive ways or in just not refusing to participate in business as usual. Are displaced, treated like less than human. These, these sweeps that are being proposed. Can you imagine being in that position and not receiving the gift of care and compassion from people? When did we stop caring about each other and doing everything in our power every day to support one another? This is all we have.
Thank you very, very much. Our next speaker, please.
Call-in user one, please go ahead.
Thank you. I really am moved by the last speaker. I know we're not supposed to address them. Sorry, I don't know how to say it in a way that's going to violate the rules, but I just want to say that I want to cry now, so it's kind of hard to talk because I have a lot to say. But thank you for that, for bringing that into the room. I have to mute every time a goddamn Zionist comes up. To spew vile anti-Palestinian racism during an annihilation that we are witnessing with their brains spilling out and the dogs eating them every single day for more than 640 something days. I think it's 660 days. This council knows that it is a genocide. It knows that every organization I could name, and it's already been named and has been provided to them in document form, details the painful scenes that we witness every day on our iPhones, on our Androids. So they are racist. These are people that unlike the Nazis are okay with open and abashed hatred for human beings based on where they live because they want the land stolen and they want supremacy. That is what's going on. And it is thinking that you can sip from that soup bowl as you poison it on the other side and that it will not kill you. This is one world that we're living in. So I really appreciate what she just said, that we are all going to partake and participate, even the oligarchy, in the world that we are creating. It is sick what is being said every meeting about Palestinians as they are the most decent, kind-hearted, generous, brave, socially-connected people I have ever encountered. And it is not a qualification to get to exist, by the way. We don't need to like anyone to not murder them and then murder them on an industrial scale. But what I wanted to start with was thank you, Sarah, for sending your letter to divest. Thank you for being a safe representative for our kids who are Palestinians with people in Palestine, their families there right now. Thank you, Kim, for your comments. Follow it up with action, please. It is violent in Arcata when police are harassing homeless people. I can't get into it. I was going to recount the whole thing that I witnessed two weeks ago. But the ticketing and the harassing of homeless people is so violent. Do not do any sweeps. Return to humanity. We should not have policing if this is what it's going to be. And this is what it is. It is now turning into a police state that will not stop at the border of Humboldt. So don't do that. Protect our homeless people. Protect our LGBTQ loved ones, including the Palestinian and Iranian ones that are right in your Arcata city. Now, divest from genocide. Stop talking about making money from killing people in Gaza and in occupied Palestine when you know, you know that...
Thank you very much for your comments. May we please have the next speaker?
MC, please go ahead.
Hi, yeah. I'm, I'll, I'm here to speak on the thing I'm initially here for. You know, you know, the contrast with the last two speakers is like indicative of kind of the range of where these things are at. And, you know, it's really unfortunate with the trespassing thing that I'm sure if you were like nice enough and went up to these people and asked them to move somewhere else, they would oblige. Just the issue is they have nowhere else to go. So you have to rely on force to kick them out. And this is not addressing the root cause. This is just kicking the symptoms around. You know, as I understand, some of this pushes for nicer trails, which, you know, sure, like I'm a big fan. But there is a larger demographic that's just interested in affordable housing. So they, you know, so they can have free time to enjoy those nice trails. And so, you know, I'm just calling to make sure that, you know, we're watching and making sure that ethical treatment is happening. And that's really important for the image of this city, to make sure. You know, if you want to boost tourism, you want to have, you know, this investment internationally and domestically, then like you should be leaders in these things. You know, the other aspect that comes up with all this stuff, you know, as I mentioned previously, was like the ethno-nationalist rhetoric. And I think plenty of people pointed out that like, you know, a lot of the things being said about Palestinians and Gazans like is just racist. It's just extremely broad, you know, racism. And, you know, if you want to improve the civil rights of Gazans, it's to end the apartheid, not to genocide them. And someone mentioned the history too about kind of how one's, you know, one's side accepted and the other side didn't. Originally, the Palestinians were agreeing to a single secular state where Jewish migrants were welcome to live. It was a... That, that was denied and it kind of talks about the potential beautiful world we could live in where there was a secular, multi-ethnic state that isn't warring with this scapegoat. And, you know, if you want to talk about kind of homophobic funding and stuff like that, you know, with our largest allies in the area and with Israel are the Saudis and they are some of the worst committers of this treatment. And so, you know, even if the Gaza city, sister city thing is too far, which I don't think it is at all, divestment, you know, we can all agree that this is a terror...
Thank you so much for your comments. And our next speaker, please.
Rafei, please go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me clearly?
Yes.
Oh, perfect. Yeah, so I'm here to give my support to the divestment from Calpers and a continued project of the sister city. Throughout many comments, I would have, I've had, I've heard many things. Some, you know, pre-orientalist things. I would absolutely recommend Orientalism by Edward Said for these folks. I think it might help them with their understanding on the world. Also, you know, I think this is important. The US is clearly responsible for this genocide. They, Israel is a proxy state created by the US after the Six-Day War. And they continue on oppressing Arabs, the Palestinians, and combating apartheid system. And also funding, you know, radical groups across the region. Look at what's happened in Syria with the genocide that's been going on with the Christians. And yeah, I think it's also really important, yeah, that we help with Gaza. So thank you and have a nice day.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please. Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Lucas, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Lucas. I'm a resident of Arcata. I'm speaking today to call for an establishment of the Palestinian Sister City as well. It's past time for this council to heed the pleas from your constituents. You know, while, while I'm not an expert on Sister Cities, I've listened to the, to the same people you have um, you have expound on the moral and ethical reasons to establish a sister city with Gaza City. But for me, the main reason really is just acknowledge them. Acknowledge the humanity. Acknowledge and humanize, humanize the Palestinian people. The goal is to make a connection to the region, to foster cultural understanding, humanitarian support, improve people's understanding of what's going on there and our own government's political and financial support for that ethnic cleansing taking place. It's gone beyond genocide. It's moving into ethnic cleansing. This is more than a small gesture and it's one that would signal to the people that are, that the people of our city can see beyond the warmongering rhetoric and recognize the value of human life. I'm also here to demand the city's leadership advocate for the divestment of war profiteering from all investments tied to the city or city employee benefits. The fact that the military industrial complex has proven to be a profitable industry does not really excuse our city's leaders' failure to acknowledge. It is a moral depravity to profit from human rights abuses, genocide, ethnic cleansing. You shouldn't need to be asked to call for divestment from genocide, to divest from the military industrial complex. Stand with your constituents and call for divestment from death, from Pers. Thank you Sarah Schaefer for sending a letter in support of the divestment. It means a lot. And thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Andrew, please go ahead.
Um, hi there. I'm Andrew. I'm here as a concerned citizen and a member of the Humboldt Tenants Union. Uh, I heard about a notice from APD to sweep and evict an encampment of unhoused folks. And really just blabbergasted that, uh, Sanctuary City would continue to do such a thing in, uh, the middle of an ongoing and seemingly boundless housing crisis. Um, I don't need to recite the 2025 Humboldt County Housing Report for you guys. I know you've all seen it. Um, but it needs to be put in perspective that there's more than, uh, more than 6,000 people lack access to an affordable home. And, um, basically, I'm just urging you to be, uh, bold in these times. Our times definitely call for it. Um, the tenants union itself does not come into an existence because things are particularly prosperous for the majority of people. Uh, the fact is that tenants are half the population. And we're all really on a shoestring here, um, even those of us who are professionals like teachers. Um, things that barely keep housed, people housed now, like Section Eight, could just disappear tomorrow. And what do we do in a time like this? I don't think evicting unhoused people from encampments is the right thing to do. So please be bold. Um, you declared Arcata a sanctuary city. That is really good. It's great rhetoric. But what happens when ICE eventually comes to the community? Will, what will the police do then? Are they prepared to kick them out? Or will they just be too busy harassing unhoused people? Um, also, free Palestine. Send a letter to CalPERS. Demand they divest, divest from genocide, please. And thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Kate, please go ahead. Kate.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um. The bigoted, uneducated people standing with the occupiers of Palestine and spreading misinformation using their age as a manipulation tool is sickening, infuriating, and not surprising. Most certainly makes me feel unsafe. Tabling a current and ongoing Holocaust is a privilege, a white privilege of, I'm gonna be frank. It's disconnect. It's normalizing grave intentional harm. It's dehumanizing. And living in a small town with such small-minded neighbors who rather look the other way as beyond me. It's a challenge for me, like, like many others empathetic and still have their humanity intact, to not be emotional when I come to these meetings and when I hear Zionists and Zionist sympathizers speak lies and within disturbing near monotone monologue. I support a sister city and any support of Gaza and Palestinians. The local goal, like Lucas said, is to foster local cultural understanding, support. Thank you to others who have spoken in support. It allows me to breathe and feel a little less maddened by the chaos and harm that continues. Thank you to council members Sarah Schaefer and Kim White for your comments at the last meeting. I encourage you, Kim, to send a letter to CalPERS. City of Arcata has an investment policy with a socially responsible investing clause. It is intended to prohibit investment in corporations with a record of gross ecological and environmental degradation. Gross violations of the rights of workers or corporations that invest in countries that have gross violations of human rights. It includes an investment objective, quote, "to invest public funds in a manner that contributes to the well-being and enrichment of the community." The city of Arcata is out of alignment with their own investment policy by remaining invested in CalPERS, which has 1.6 billion invested in companies supporting genocide. The least the city council members can do to bring the city back into alignment is to send a letter to CalPERS demanding they divest from these companies. And thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to ask you, how many more people do we have on Zoom?
There are two more hands raised.
Okay, thank you.
Tamara, please go ahead. Tamara.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. So I was not planning originally to talk, but I kind of like, um, I wanted to challenge like, um, the city um, about like the rules about like, um, allowing like, um, in public comments to the people that, um, comment on other people that speak. It's my understanding, like you, you'd speak to the city council about what you wanted to speak, but you don't comment on other comments. So I'd really appreciate like, um, to, for this understanding from the city manager, like if you, I heard like calling names about people that speak. So this is something like that, um, I wanted to mention. I want to clarify that my family, including myself, have Palestinian friends. I have nothing to do about innocence Gaza. I have a problem about like the ruling Gaza, the ruling authority of Gaza, which is currently Hamas, that Hamas, um, committed October 7th, and they will do it over and over and over again. So I support all the Palestinian people that oppose this government, okay? So I have nothing against Palestinian as a people. And I wanted to put the attention today as I stand with, um, Jews people that being slaughtered right now in Gaza, that I would like, um, the attention for the, that, um, the attention right now, um, for this, and I hold the space for them, and I stand with them that's standing against Islamist jihadists. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
And this is the last hand raised. Sarah, may please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so yeah, my intention tonight was to first thank Sarah for sending her letter to CalPERS um, and ask that the other council members do the same and to divest from CalPERS. Um, but I'm, you know, that was my intention, but I'm honestly just so enraged and disgusted by the amount of like propaganda and Islamophobia and hate that I've heard spewed in these chambers tonight. It's, it's really just, it's caused me to feel like really disregulated, but, um, I just want to remind everyone that Israel is a violent settler colonial state built on genocide and ethnic cleansing. Um, and regarding, you know, LGBTQ rights and saying that those folks are unsafe, you know who's unsafe in Gaza? Everyone. Every single person being bombed and displaced and starved and displaced again and again, they are all unsafe. Everyone in Gaza is unsafe because of Israel, because of the continued bombardment of Israel. Um, and also this idea of just like tabling, tabling, oh, the, the wars over there, the war over there. The idea of that is so nauseating to me. Like the, the fact that, you know, just to think, oh, this has nothing to do with us. This has nothing to do with little Arcata over here. It just shows how deep, you know, the, the cognitive dissonance goes. We would have a lot more funds and energy and things to invest in schools and roads and community and all the things that we care about if we were not sending billions of dollars to Israel to bomb children in tents. In my opinion, we should be, we should be rioting in the streets right now. We should be generally striking. There are parents in Gaza who are watching their children wither away to bone because they cannot feed them. People are being shot in the head while they're trying to get a bag of flour. Can you just imagine for one minute if those were your kids? If those were your loved ones? Like I, I don't, I don't, I don't know how we can still just be going around in circles here. There is nothing more urgent than stopping this, and we are completely, we are completely involved. We are invested. And so I'm just asking, please to, to stay connected to your humanity, um, divest from this genocide that's ongoing. And yeah, don't, don't, like, I don't know, just don't feed into the propaganda that's apparently very prevalent um, still here in our beautiful town. Thank you.
Thank you. And I assume that's our last speaker?
That's correct.
Thank you very much. So we are finished now with, uh, oral and written communications. Now we'll go on to council reports. So I don't know who wants to start first. But I will. I'll just start first. Um, so I've been thinking about CalPERS, uh, for some time. And if we're not the only one, well, I don't have CalPERS. I didn't sign up for it. So the rest of the council has it, but not me. And so my feeling is that as far as Calp, you don't have it either?
I have CalPERS.
Oh, well, whatever. But my feeling is that we have, we have city employees current and we also have retired. So if we want to get rid of CalPERS, I think it has to be something that would involve a survey of the employees. And you all, the rest of you that have CalPERS, would have to actually think about that, if you want to do that. But I know people are desperate for us to do it. And then I think about all the wars that we have going on elsewhere in the world. And if we're, it's a devastating situation. And this is not the only one, but it's the only one that's been focused on for Arcata. The other thing under public comment, we can take public comment as long as it's not derogatory towards us from anybody that wants to call us. And we had one speaker asking if we could eliminate that, and it's not actually possible to do that. So the other thing I wanted to go, I'm gonna just finish because then I'm, I'm going to skip to the bathroom and let you all finish and come back. So I wanted to say that, um, this last week, Humboldt Transit Authority, um, had a retreat and it was really very, very valuable and they got a lot of information. We all participated. And our top staffer, HDA, was present. Right now there is a, uh, transit, um, California Transit Meeting that's happening down at the River Lodge in Fortuna. And there are people from the furthest away, I think, is probably, um, Georgia. We have Winnipeg and then the, all the individuals that are up here freezing to death because they're from Palm Springs, et cetera, et cetera. But they think it's actually delightful to have it so cool. Um, I wanted to mention that Avello is going to be pulling out of, uh, Arcata Airport and, um, it, on December 2nd, that'll have an effect on our students coming up from, uh, our Los Angeles area because they have a really a good fare. And it's so hard for us to get airlines into, um, Arcata. Nevertheless, I always hate to see no matter what, one leave. And I know that Avello had record, um, implant, well, they call them, and, well, implantments in April, so they did extremely well with us up here. So that's all I want to say. Oh, I would like to mention that, um, that the city manager remind everyone that we're going to be closing City Hall starting when, at 1:00 on Fridays. When is that going to begin? Is it August 1st or is it, uh, right now?
Let me just double check the date, but August 3rd, I believe, is that first-
August 3rd, okay. I just wanted to put that out so people were aware that that's a change. We're going to temporarily try. So meanwhile, whoever wants to carry on can carry on now.
We'll go this way and go down the, the line. Um, RCEA, Redwood Coast Energy Authority, uh, will be hosting a battery storage workshop right here in Arcata at the D Street Neighborhood Center. It's gonna be Wednesday, July 23rd, um, from 5:30 to 7:00. It's gonna just be a lot of information about, yeah, uh, processes for installing battery storage, what that looks like on a personal scale, lots of good information. Um, and there's also going to be another round, um, of e-bike vouchers coming from RCEA. They haven't announced, uh, when those are gonna be coming out, but they say to keep checking back on their website and social media, so I will let people know once I know. Um, also, just a few updates, uh, for some upcoming events for Equity Arcata. Equity Arcata is gonna be having an open house, um, followed by a group heading to the Crabs game. Um, that's gonna be on July 26th, uh, at 4:45, they're gonna kind of do some general information down here at the new Equity Arcata office at the Annex behind the Transit Center. Um, and then around 6:00 PM, head to the Crabs game, um, with the group that is interested. Uh, Equity Arcata is also gonna be hosting another one of their vendor workshops. Uh, they did this at the end of last school year and people were pretty excited about it. So both information on how to become, um, a business in the city of Arcata and then also information on, uh, vending at Cal Poly Humboldt and getting involved, um, with vending at the university. And so again, that's gonna be at the D Street Neighborhood Center. It's gonna be August 15th, um, from 6:00 to 7:30. And then lastly, um, also Equity Arcata, um, the Sanctuary Day that's being planned um, with Central Playbowl and Equity Arcata, um, at the Farmer's Market on August 23rd. And then, um, Equity Arcata and Central are gonna be hosting a, a convening of sorts too from 2:00 to 5:00 afterward. So, that's all I got. Oh, also, I rode my bike on the trail. I rode to Eureka and back and went to the opening ceremony celebration ribbon cutting thing. It was amazing. It's wonderful. The trail is such an awesome resource that our community has now. Um, so I encourage you to get out there and ride some or all of it and it's wonderful.
So many walkers and skateboarders and it's amazing joggers.
It is amazing. Um, and I did walk on it, not the whole thing, but I have plans to ride the whole thing. Um, so, let's see, I had a meeting, um, with Merritt and Mo, who's the, um, uh, manager of Equity Arcata and myself and some folks from the Project Rebound at Cal Poly Humboldt. And that is the program that, um, um, offers education to incarcerated folks. And there are some housing issues when transitioning out and trying to finish the degree here in Arcata. And I mean, I think most of us know how difficult it is to find a rental in Arcata. And so if you can imagine the additional challenge of coming in, you know, fresh out of prison, it makes it immensely difficult. So we were working with them to kind of problem solve and find some ideas and I was really grateful that they reached out for us to partner with that. Um, no action taken, but hopefully something in the future. And then I, I met with Merritt, Mo and I, again, with, um, folks from Hoppy to talk about the Arcata Chinatown project. And they're really busy right now trying to, um, get this last push for the big Eureka Chinatown project, but we just met together to talk about the possibility of some near-term ideas and then also long-term ideas as well. So that was great. And then today I had the homelessness services working group with, um, various folks from around the county to focus on um, just different situations and scenarios in Arcata. Um, one of the things that we talked about was how to make the Home Key Project sustainable. There's, those are, um, you know, a, a great amount of folks that were formerly homeless that have been housed in those projects, but we also need to be able to keep them up and running. So we talked about that. As well as the tenant-based assistance program that a lot of folks in our community depend on and how, um, we are grateful to expect that to continue, but trying to work on how to not have a gap in the services because that can be pretty devastating to folks who depend on that. And then we also talked about the community ambassadors and the, um, Merritt shared with us that they're excited to be, um, also covering the Valley West area, which is something we've been wanting to do for quite some time. So, um, working to transition some of those there. Um, the, we're still looking for a home, a- Um, the, we're still looking for a home, a place for them to be able to use the restroom and take a little, uh, rest and maybe, you know, work on their computers. Um, I, we did, I guess, reached out to Kuna for hopefully using, um, the, the building facility that they have there. But, um, I'm, I'm not sure why, but, um, that didn't happen. Where, um, the good news is there were several people on the call that were very, you know, excited to host them. And so we do have some other places for them. And so I look forward to getting that off the ground soon. And, um, I have HCOG tomorrow, and so I'll be able to report on that at the next meeting. That's all.
So I did want to address that. Um, first of all, we're on a lease and we have a bunch of new programs coming. So short of putting them in the hall for their meeting and their breaks, we just can't accommodate it. I mean, it's a good problem to have that we are growing so fast. Um, as, as of August 15th, we'll be putting in a lot of new programming. We have some Cal Poly Humboldt III actually, new interns on top of our current interns. So unfortunately, we just don't have the capacity or a place to put. Um, but I'm, I'm happy to hear that it sounds like Darlene from Arcade House Partnership has a way to, um, house them and have a place for them to meet, take their breaks and use the bathrooms and, and do what they do. I'm thrilled to see that we have that coming out to our Valley West, um, area. I also want to mention that I have Cal Savers through my Kuna job. Um, and also just want to say, I-
You have what?
Cal Savers through Kuna, through Arcade Playhouse Arts. So just when you make assumptions that we're all doing certain things. Anyway, I'm excited to share that I attended my first Cal Poly Humboldt City Liaison Meeting and it was really informative. Not only were there a lot of city updates, but Cal Poly Humboldt, um, also brought a lot of much-needed updates and activities. So, you know, basically we just let them know that the Annie and Mary Trail connecting North Arcata to Cal Poly Humboldt and the new dorms, uh, noting that that bid's gonna be going out next week. The Sunset and Cal Poly Humboldt Student Housing will hopefully, uh, that trail will be opening soon. Most of it's gonna occur in 2026. The Sunset Avenue Two Roundabouts that, you know, it's on its timeline of 2026. Reconnecting communities, budget cuts have halted it. However, there is an RFQ happening and the city is still moving forward with half million new proposed funding. And while there's been an elimination, I know some folks have seen that old ceramic sculpture lab building on campus going down. It's gonna be moved to Jenkins Hall. So that's gonna invigorate both the lab and Jenkins Hall. Um, and then moving along late summer, the healthcare hub at Stewart Hall, which is across the street from Arcata House, or, excuse me, Arcata High School is gonna be, um, it's on target. And then the Hinor Hu Muluk, which is the Craftsman Mall, its first scheduled move-in is August 1st with the full move-in on August 22nd. The campus housing apartments, if anybody's been up to campus lately, you see there's a lot of redevelopment and movement up there. So they're doing some asbestos abatement currently. They're working on healing that site, both the parking lot and the site, and then the health center and housing, um, and dining facilities. This will be the last major facility paid by state funds. Um, Cal Poly Humboldt is bringing back the Campus Safety and Police Committee. Um, the city is doing an emergency response planning with tabletop exercises coming in October. That's gonna be headed up by NTRA. And I'm really thrilled that prior to that, I will be attending the National Association of Latino Elected Officials for a disaster preparedness training up in Texas. That'll be in late September, so it'll preempt the city meeting. And also this Sunday, I'm headed to another Naleo Conference on Sunday and it'll be focusing on housing and more. Um, I'm looking forward to the Crabs Equity Arcata game. I'll come back just with one day in time to do that. And, yeah, Equity Arcata, I'm looking forward to that new sanctuary meeting happening on the plaza. And also so relieved to hear about the tenant-based rental subsidy program that's gonna be funded. Um, and, yeah, I am concerned about the gap. So many people out at Lazy J, but I think, um, you know, it's, we're gonna be okay. And then finally, just a reminder that the workshop for the standard of care with the city council in Arcata Fire District is July 30th. And that's all I got.
I wondered why you took all those notes today. Now I know why. You reported on actually everything that was reported on. And I did attend that meeting also and I, I think it was really great to have, uh, and I would like to thank Bethany and Merritt for being able to pull it together and to have us in person. And probably in the future, um, those meetings will be in person. So if there's nothing else, I'm gonna move on to confirm a joint study session with the Board of Directors of the Arcata Fire District for July 30th, 2025 at 3:30 PM. And we'll be here in the council chambers. So with that, we're adjourned.